Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance, Lynda, you're good. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? Prue of agenda, additions or deletions, I had one. And it might be something you're gonna mention anyway, Minister Furey's visit, is that on your list?
Yeah, Minister Couveen.
Okay, so seven J for Minister Furey, J, okay.
Minister, I think it's Couveen.
Who's coming?
Neil Couveen.
Oh, I thought Mark was coming. Oh, that's something else, okay, go ahead.
You can put that down, though.
Yeah.
Minister House. Uh, a question on the YMCA when it comes to the grant application, Your Worship, but Bob Steed, Mayor of Wolfville.
Want me to write that?
Please.
Seven, seven J's Minister Furey's visit, seven K Minister House, seven L.
Tax exemption and D transfer tax.
I'm just gonna put tax exemption.
Yeah.
What'd you say, Mayor Wolfville?
Mayor Wolfville, yeah.
Okay.
And Prince Charles.
M, and, is he coming to town?
Well, we're gonna try.
Prince Charles, seven N, anything else? CAO?
Your Worship, there are two, two additions on your desk as you arrived today. One is a memo from myself regarding expense reports, and the other one is an in-camera item regarding property sale.
Okay, so those are seven I and nine A. Certainly?
Thank you, Your Worship, CAO, is the presenter going to be at the meeting or not? On the last item, number two. In-camera one.
Go ahead, CAO.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
Your Worship?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Maybe we could move the presenters up to, before we do staff reports, if that's all right?
Moving six up to right now, okay? Good, motion to approve.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. So we are moving six A up, presentation by the Agricultural Society. Welcome, it's Amy. Just, you, you just have to speak right into the microphone, and ten minutes for presentation, so we'll just keep an eye.
Okay, okay, well, thank you for finally allowing the Agricultural Society to make a presentation. We did make this request two months ago, 'cause we needed to find out the answer to a question regarding the building of a new multipurpose dirt floor arena facility. The Yarmouth County Agricultural Society is the volunteer organization that organizes the Western Nova Scotia Exhibition. Before we talk about that issue, though, we just want to explain the relationship the Agricultural Society has with the Mariners' property. Yes, the Agricultural Society sold the land, now known as the Mariners', Mariners' Centre property, to the town and municipality for the development of a new multipurpose community facility. The Society was in financial trouble and sold the land for a dollar in the forgiveness of their debt. This was done with the understanding that the yearly exhibition would still be held on the property. True, this now only makes Agricultural Society a renter of the facility, but unlike other renters, we have a unique event and relationship with the facility. Unlike other events held at the Mariners' Centre, we use both the inside and outside of the Mariners' Centre building. Throughout the years, the Agricultural Society and the Mariners' Centre management have worked together to do things for each other when necessary. The Agricultural Society would like to bring your attention to the following information. The Agricultural Society supplied support for the original funding for the Mariners' Centre complex as a future and continued user of the building and the land. The Agricultural Society sourced funding and the project management to build the Anthony Pavilion, which aside from the two weeks of exhibition use, the Mariners' Centre uses the Anthony Pavilion for storage, including campers and trailers looking for storage throughout the winter months. The Agricultural Society owns the portable stalls that are in the Anthony Pavilion during Exhibition Week, and in the past, the Mariners' Centre has rented out, collected, and retained any financial income after the Agricultural Society assembles the stalls. The Agricultural Society owns the chain-link fencing currently surrounding the Mariners' Centre property, as well as enough extra fencing to close off the rear lot completely. The fencing is removable, but the Agricultural Society received a verbal agreement from the Mariners' Centre management to leave the fence standing year-round to provide the Mariners' Centre with a sense of security for their property. The Agricultural Society puts down and covers the cost of, on average, forty tons of gravel in the rear of the Mariners' Centre building annually to create a more usable area, as who wants to ride on a wobbly Ferris wheel? The Agricultural Society owns the dome coverall building and uses it to house their kitty farm animals during Exhibition Week, but they also provide it as a storage facility for the Mariners' Centre free of charge for the remainder of the year. The Agricultural Society owns the electrical building located on the fence along Jody Shelley Drive, which is used as an outside power source. This has been used for other events outside the Mariners' Centre that require power, such as the Fire Chiefs Convention. The Agricultural Society pays the electrical bill for any power used from it. The Agricultural Society provided the lights and power poles for the outside warm-up ring, so the ring may be used after dark. The Agricultural Society does own the office trailer located behind the Mariners' Centre and pays the electrical bill, and the Mariners' Centre management did choose the paint color of the trailer. The Agricultural Society owns the portable bleachers and portable booths on the Mariners' Centre property, which have been used by other community groups when they host an event. The Agricultural Society also owns the weights and sleds that are used for the oxen, the heavy horse, and truck pulls during the exhibition. They have been loaned free of charge to the ATV jamboree during their events. The Agricultural Society does pay rent to the Mariners' Centre for the use of the facilities, which includes cleaning of the Mariners' Centre main building. We hope this gives you a better understanding that despite the fact that we are just renters of the facility and property now, the Agricultural Society is invested in the property, as we do more than a normal renter would do. Now back to the question that we need an answer to. The Agricultural Society was approached by the Mariners' Centre management during the 2012 exhibition about the building of a new multipurpose facility that would feature a dirt floor, which would stop the practice of placing dirt in Arena One of the Mariners' Centre. This project was started September 4th, 2012, with a meeting between the Agricultural Society and the Mariners' Centre Management Board. This type of, of a facility had been talked about in previous years by the Mariners' Centre Management Board, the Town of Yarmouth, and the Municipality of Yarmouth, but funding could not be secured for it yet. This is the reason the Agricultural Society was asked to step in, as the, as the Mariners' Centre Management Board asked the Agricultural Society to use their advantage of being an agricultural organization to secure funding from government departments the Mariners' Centre could not access. The Agricultural Society met with both federal and provincial agencies and determined support could be found for a multipurpose, fully enclosed dirt floor structure. But due to the fact that this facility would be owned by the Town and Municipality of Yarmouth, before the Agricultural Society could secure the funding, a letter of support was needed from both the Town and Municipalities of Yarmouth as the owners of the property. The Agricultural Society asked for that support a year ago, but instead of giving it to us, the Mariners' Centre applied for the funding in March of 2013 and was turned down in April of 2013. After the motion made by the Mariners' Centre in August to not allow dirt inside the Mariners' Centre in the future, our two groups met again to get the multipurpose dirt floor arena facility back on track, but we now have two issues. The first issue involves the type of structure to build. The Mariners' Centre Board wants to build an open pavilion structure with a roof only, while the Agricultural Society wants a fully enclosed structure. The main reason for a fully enclosed structure is that the government indicated that that was the only type of structure they were willing to fund. Due to that, the Agricultural Society had an engineer draw-up plans for a fully enclosed structure in October of 2012 that would cost $520,000. The Agricultural Society did share the plans with the Mariners' Centre manager and the chairman of the board, and they responded that they were concerned with security, maintenance, and cleaning of an enclosed structure. A proposal of a new multipurpose facility on the grounds of the Mariners' Centre was submitted to the CAOs in February of 2013 to take to the Town of Yarmouth and the Municipality of Yarmouth council meetings. The following funding arrangement was proposed to raise the $520,000. Fifty percent would come from federal funding, which would be applied through the Department of Agriculture, ACOA, and Heritage Canada; twenty percent from provincial funding, which would be applied through the Department of Economic and Rural Development; ten percent would come from the town; ten percent from the Municipality of Yarmouth, as required by the government grant applications; and the Yarmouth County Agricultural Society was willing to find ten percent as well. However, at a joint meeting between our two groups on September 24th of 2013, the Mariners' Centre Management Board denied knowing that our plans were for a fully enclosed structure and shared that they do not have the same vision for the structure. Due to this difference, they were getting their own plans on their vision for a dirt arena structure, however, that didn't or hasn't happened yet. The second issue that the Agricultural, is that the Agricultural Society still needs a letter of support from the Town and Municipality before any funding can be secured. The Mariners' Centre Management Board indicated to the Agricultural Society at our last joint meeting on October 7th that they had the support from the Town and Municipality and that they would get the letter of support for us. This didn't or hasn't happened yet either, hence the reason for our meeting request. Securing the finances for this project can't proceed without that letter. The Agricultural Society met with the Municipality on November 19th and determined that they supported the project, and they gave their verbal agreement with the promise of a written letter once we met with the town and received your approval as well. That is essentially what we need from you today. The Agricultural Society know, needs to know if the Town of Yarmouth supports an exhibition held at the Mariners' Centre property, and if the Town of Yarmouth still supports the building of a dirt floor arena facility. The Agricultural Society feels this is a project which can be used as a multipurpose facility by the community, and has been in discussion with other groups that are looking for an arena with a dirt floor, including the Maritime Ox Teamsters Association, the Tri-County Equestrian Club, the Western Shore Barrel Racing Club, the Maritime Barrel Racing Association, the Nova West Kennel Club, Canine Good Neighbors, and the Yarmouth Redliners Four-by-Four Club. There are also other possibilities that the arena could be used for, including street hockey, concerts, community barbecues, flea markets, the RCMP musical ride, and practice for sports teams. Due to the 2014 exhibition only being six months away, even if we were to get your approval today, obviously the dirt floor arena will not be ready for use for the 2014 exhibition. The Mariners' Centre Management Board decision to not allow dirt in the main arena before a new structure was completed came as a surprise to the Agricultural Society. The manager of the Mariners' Centre previously stated in an email that while we agree that the ideal situation is to have a building completed in time for next July, we also recognize the challenge in making that happen. As much as we would like to avoid placing dirt in the arena, I am confident that as long as there is an effort to find an alternative, the Management Board will allow for continued use. We very much appreciate that this requires a great deal of work, and we will support this initiative in any way we can. This was a project initiated by the Mariners' Centre Manage Board in which they requested the Agricultural Society's assistance. The Agricultural Society has met resistance every step of the way and feels the delays in obtaining the funding for the dirt floor arena was not our fault, and due to the statement from the manager, we requested an extension of one year on that decision. However, that was turned down with little discussion or compromise from the Mariners' Centre Management Board Chair. What, essentially what we need from you today is we need to know if the Town of Yarmouth still supports the building of a new multipurpose facility, and if you do, then we need a letter of support so that we can continue to source the funding for the project. The Mariners' Centre Management Board has indicated that they are not interested at all in finding any of the funding, and they have left that up to the Agricultural Society on its own. However, we can't do that without the approval from both you and the municipality, and that is essentially what we're here for today.
Okay, thank you, Amy. First of all, we don't, we won't make any decisions today.
Yes.
So, just so we're clear on that. I, I, I don't know if anyone's gonna have any questions, but I have one. You mentioned a meeting on October 7th, I, I don't know if you can look back in your notes, might just be a major.
Yep.
On October 7th, where we provided support for something?
Well, the Mariners' Centre Management Board, I guess our big thing is that we can't go forward without the support, without a letter of support from the Town and the Municipality, because the, the Agricultural Society is not gonna own the building. So essentially, the government says we can't apply for funding of a building we're not gonna own, unless we have your support. The Mariners' Centre Management Board indicated that the Town of Yarmouth and that the Municipality of Yarmouth still supported the project, and that they would obtain the letter of support for, for us, but that hasn't happened yet.
Okay, 'cause I don't, unless I'm missing something, I don't remember.
No.
I don't remember supporting.
It was, it was a joint, it was a joint meeting between the Mariners' Centre Management Board and the Agricultural Society.
Counselor Dennis, go ahead.
Yes, I just have a question. You said the Municipality of Yarmouth is, supported it verbally, did they support an enclosed or an open concept for the facility?
We didn't officially decide that, they felt that if, that it was a project that we probably wouldn't wanna rush, so we would wanna sit down and see which way to go, but according to the government agencies that we talked to, they will not support an open structure. So if you guys want, unless you wanna build the whole arena on your own, if you want the government support, it pretty much has to be an enclosed structure. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, anyone? I think we have a copy of what you just.
Yes, pretty much what I read was kind of a summary of, some background information that I emailed everybody on December 10th. Yeah.
Good? Thank you. Okay. CAO report, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship, there's a paper copy of my, my report on your desk, apologize you didn't get it with the electronic copy. It is online and you have it, and I can answer any questions today or Saturday, if you like as well.
Any questions for the CAO? Counselor McCrystick.
Thank you, Your Worship, I'm just glancing through this, I did earlier, and I don't see anything on the transit, transit system.
Should be in there somewhere, but.
Well, if, if it is, that's great, if it's not, we'll look at it.
Yeah, we've, we've updated the RFP, I reviewed it again, the document Mr. McDonald provided, or prepared, asked him to put some background information, which he did, and now it needs to be issued.
Yeah, I, I see, as, as I discussed with you yesterday, not, I didn't really discuss it with you yesterday, but the Municipality of the Town, the Municipality of Yarmouth.
Yes.
Had a, had a meetings on transit, and they've done a survey. They got, they had funding for that, and it's a shame that we wasn't invited to be part of that survey. Is it possible that we could get some feedback from the municipality survey to see where they are? I don't know if it's totally completed yet, your thoughts on that, CAO?
I have the contact information for the consultant, and I can ask him, you know, what the possibilities are to be able to dovetail some work for the town with that. The only issue is, we haven't gone through procurement process for, for ours, that we have prepared the document, in terms of getting a fair process. If we put our document out or put our call for proposals out, presumably they would be in a very good position to, to bid, and obviously knowing the, knowing the, the results of their survey and the work they've done for the municipality, we, we would either be able to benefit if they were successful, benefit from that knowledge, or if they weren't successful, the final report would be available to whatever consultant we.
Okay, thank you, thank you Jeff, and thank you, Worship.
Good, any more questions for the CAO? I don't know, but we keep piling on it. Okay, thanks. Fire department report, how goes it, Chief?
It was pretty good, the report was the best one we sent to everyone who was in the, thank you for having me. Any questions?
Any questions for the Chief? Good, thank you. Planning department report, Arthur, any questions for Arthur? Go ahead.
Just a quick one, Arthur, I read bri, I read briefly your upcoming meeting on, for north end, south end, opening up a little bit more for commercial use and residential use, did I read that right or not? Perhaps I didn't read it right. Your, your upcoming meeting, what, what is that about?
Our upcoming meeting on Tuesday?
Yes.
We have an application for a wellness designation and zoning.
Zoning, the zoning one.
On Vancouver Street, part of the hospital complex, and we have a MPS and OUB amendment to allow restaurants.
That's the one.
Convenience stores and personal service shops by development agreement within any destination, so it's throughout the entire town.
Okay, that's, that's a good thing, I think. Yeah, okay, great.
Is that you agreeing with the counselor, it's a good thing? I couldn't tell if he's going, thank you for your opinion, or if he really agrees.
You already said it, it was more about.
Exactly, exactly.
We'll go get a poll, get a poll first.
Yeah.
And the committee.
Yeah. Good, okay, thank you, Arthur. Operational Services Engineers Report, any questions there? Dave, anything you need to tell us?
I don't have anything, so it's, everything is approved, all this stuff.
Alrighty, oh, sorry.
Sorry, thank you, Worship.
Counselor Mooney's like first, and then, that's all right, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation the other day, Dave, that was very informative, the, yeah, all the things that we have to do with, with everything that comes with public work, but I got a question, and even Counselor Langill might be able to help me out with this, is over the last couple days, with the storm day yesterday, a few people on the, as Danny would call it, spacebook, have been bitching and complaining about how much it costs to run the lights in Frost Park. If, I know Counselor Langill might have an answer, or Dave, you, could you enlighten myself and the public on how much it costs to run the lights in Frost Park for one day?
That's a very good question.
I think Counselor Langill knows, Counselor Langill, I think you know the answer?
Well, I don't wanna be quoted on this one, I remember when we did them a year or so ago, and maybe Jeff, who was younger and got a better memory than I have, the question was posed for Rodney Doucette, who was our construction foreman, this would have been a year or so ago, and we were at that time told that the, yeah, about two seasons ago, at that time, we were using less efficient lights than we are now, and my understanding, and it could be corrected, that is the equivalent of four 100 light bulbs.
Yes.
Basically, is what we were told at the time, because these are very high efficient lights, so I'm not sure the CAO, now, since then, we've put some new upgrades in, we've put underground wiring in, there's a lot of farriables in there, so that could be up or down, I don't know, but we can definitely find out that information for you, maybe, Jeff may have a better idea, too, I may be off-base on that.
I think the answer is not much, but.
Yeah, I, I don't have a more specific answer, in fact, I wouldn't have recalled that detail about the four 100 watt bulbs, but they are, all LED bulbs are all high efficiency and very, very, they draw very little. If it is of interest, we could probably see what we can determine from the packaging in terms of the wattage of those strings of lights and give you some sort of estimate, if that's of interest.
Just curiosity, that's all. It's not very much. Thank you.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Worship, on to the number three Hawthorne Street, streetscape upgrade, now perhaps I've missed something, and I drew a blank, but it says received funding for streetscape amenities. Where did this funding come from, please? Did we, did we say okay to it? Did we, did that come from council?
From ACOA, ACOA for, uh, landscaping, streetscape furniture, trees, that's it.
From ACOA?
From ACOA.
Is that waterfront?
Sidewalks or, or other, for shock.
All right, all right, 'cause it said, that.
That, that was 150,000, I believe.
I don't know. Yeah.
Jim, Jim Cornington, like, all that.
CAO?
Your Worship, that, that is part of, part of the ACOA project, so ACOA is a three-quarter funder of, of a $500,000 project. That element is 150,000, so the ACOA share would be somewhere in the area of 115. So that, those elements are part of a larger project that, that I think Dave put a price on of about 700,000.
Yes.
And that is up for consideration in the, in the capital funding priorities.
We'll pick up the rest.
So we, we have not approved that necessarily, we haven't approved it, council has not approved the 700, or the 685, 585 that would go with the 115 to make it happen.
It's still coming.
It's, it's to be considered, to be decided, yeah.
Any more questions for the engineer? Finance department, Jerry here?
Jerry, is it, is that one of the meeting, hopefully, will be there.
Okay, all right, we can ask Jerry if he comes, if we have anything, Yarmouth Recreation. Frank senses regrets, thank you, okay. Down to number seven, business marketing plan, CAO?
Your Worship, this, this is just, I asked that we defer this one until this meeting, it was about the $15,000 that we were gonna spend on the marketing plan, and I told you I'd find it, and advised you at the committee hall where it was. Well, I, I was late asking Mr. Varan, I've asked him, he's not here to give, to give you the answer, so if we can defer this until his arrival, we'll put him on the spot.
Perfect, that works. Counselor Langill?
Your Worship, unless there's something on the agenda, I'm not aware of, that involves staff, I mean, it's a shame with all the snow removal to keep our engineer and planner and all that here for the rest of the meeting, I was gonna suggest that unless somebody in council had a question for staff, maybe they could be free to go to bigger and better things, is a thought.
Yeah, good, go ahead.
Your Worship, that's, that's probably a good idea, the only item on here that might necessarily affect, or a staff person may wanna comment on is seven H, the street cleaning.
Okay, let's do her now. Okay, Counselor Langill, that was yours?
Yes, thank you, Worship, yeah, I've, I think all of us have had, over the years, in my case, years, and some people over the year, more than enough queries on street cleaning. And of late, I've been getting a numbered, I know we discussed the other day, of buying a new street cleaner, hopefully a quieter one. The brunt of the discussion has been around the hours that our street cleaner operates. I think we all agree the need to have clean streets, and I don't think there's any denying the need for the service, and there's no suggestion to even cut back on the service. I think the concern is, in residential areas, the service starting as early as it does, which is in around the 4:00 AM hour. Now, for weirdos like me that are running around around 4:30 in the morning, it doesn't bother me, in fact, it's kind of reassuring knowing there's another human being operating at the hour. However, I think I'm in the minority here, so this is not a personal thing. I'm wondering, and talking to some of my colleagues and other municipal units, they operate their street cleaning services a little bit later, especially in residential, and in some areas, what they do is put the main pressure on the business center, in our case, it would be Main Street, Stars Road, probably Pleasant Street, areas where we have a fair concentration of business, that would be later, and the need for that, and then, as the day proceeds, to move into the residential areas. And I'm bringing it forward today, as, I'm not expecting an answer today, but I'd like to maybe suggest. an answer today, but I'd like to maybe suggest that staff look into some way that we can kind of come up the middle with street cleaning, um, the call that was particularly troubling was from a lady who made an excellent point, uh, we have regulated construction, so that it can't start in the town of Yarmouth until seven o'clock or later, yet we have a machinery ourselves that are on the street in the wee hours, and, uh, on one hand, we're telling commercial entities, thou shalt not make noise, but then, on the other hand, we are indeed making noise, um, and I'm just wondering if it's maybe something, and again, and Mr. Ernst may want to discuss, or is there something in scheduling, uh, that we could somehow, uh, accommodate residential streets primarily, so that maybe the service, uh, isn't as early as it is, I mean, even the six o'clock in the morning start, or whatever, five thirty, or just, instead of this four, this one lady said it was as early as three thirty one morning, which I can't see that, but I do know, know the four, four thirty is realistic, and this is what's been happening, if we can maybe move it up, and I'm just throwing it on the table, your worship, maybe some of the other councillors may have comments, or maybe, maybe all went on this one, but I didn't want to, to bring it up, uh, because I promised the constituent, uh, in this particular case, who's a little bit concerned, that I would indeed bring it up, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mackay?
Yes, thank you your worship, I, I, I receive calls about, about the same thing, and it's the hours in the morning, the, I know in the summertime, uh, it has been, as, as a rule, that they would go by it, probably quarter after four, twenty after four, but I got used to it, it, it really doesn't bother me, there were some complaints, a few years back, of when they turned around, the, the beep and noise, that safety, the safety, uh, bell that goes off, was quite loud, and it woke a lot of people up in, in that area, so, they fixed that by going down a little further, and turned around a little further where there was no houses, and so, they, they, they did rectify that, which was great. I've only received a few calls as of late, about the early morning, but that's usually in the summertime, uh, I, I got a call the other day also, and I wasn't really totally aware of it, that the, the, the machine was going out, but then I thought, yes, it does go out, pretty much on fine days, if we've had fine weather, a few days in a row, it does go out, and I don't know what areas it starts off, I always thought it was Main Street, in the early hours, because there's less residential on Main Street, and then take the backstreets or whatever, in a, in a later hour, but I, I'm not really sure of the schedule, so, I really couldn't confer with this person that called, why this, why the machine was up and about around quarter to four, four o'clock in the morning, at one spot for fifteen or twenty minutes, I, I didn't know, and I think I asked Jeff or, or Dave the other day, and they were going to check into it, so, I believe I did, I wasn't sure, but, uh, she, you Dave, no, that's, that's alright, yeah, that's, that's alright, but anyway, I, I said that I, I would ask, and, uh, so, uh, when I get the answer, I'll, I'll, I'll give it to the, the, the per people that called on this particular street, up, up, uh, at the north end, but, anyway, I, I just want to concur with my colleague here, uh, Councillor Langel, that there has been calls, and I don't know how rampant it is all through town, but I know last year, where there was an incident where they stopped it all together, unbeknownst to me, that they stopped it all together on Parade Street or whatever, just diverted it and didn't do it, and, and then other people were calling complaining because the streets were dirty, and, and, you know, so, I don't know what, how, how we can fix this, I, I believe it's not a hard fix, it, it should be an easy fix, change the time of schedule, whatever, and that, that should be it, I, I don't know, I'm not the engineer, and perhaps Dave could look into it, C A O can work with it, and see what happens, anyway, thank you, and I look forward to your reply, Dave.
Normally, we don't operate on our time at all, with, uh, mild instructions, they, 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 she knows, just trying to do it.
That's right, that's right. Which is good, then?
Normally, we operate for forty-eight, and it's good.
Monday, Thursday, Friday, uh, four, two.
Um, not to be, uh, I think that it's important to do the work that we're doing, and, um, with respect to, um, Danny and Kenny, I, I'm also out early, and, um, I think there's a balance, and I think the town works hard to do, to achieve a balance, and, and I can only support, uh, Dave and what he's doing, we, we, it's important to have the cleaning that we do at the hour that you are indicating, I'm sure you're aware, I get, I get the occasional call too, um, I, I don't see that as a big problem, if you go by Parade Street, which I think is where one of the questions or comments come from, we're only there for thirty seconds, or one minute, and, uh, so I don't see it as a huge challenge, but I understand that.
I don't hear it anymore, I, I'm not used to it, I used to live downtown, World Health Act, on V G, Simon's School, and that, that.
It just drives by. Councillor?
So anyway, just to throw it out to Dave, maybe Dave, you could look at it, is there any specific reason why we started four, is it a staffing issue, uh, at all, or?
Avoid traffic.
It's a traffic thing?
Our cars.
So, could we not maybe whip around that curve, it's a problem like the snowplows do, or is it, uh, or thought, or maybe the possibility, like I do know in some areas, they actually post signs, no parking between the hours of whatever, whatever, due to street cleaning, that?
They do.
Yeah, as a possibility, you know, just simply to prohibit, to simply say, your street's going to be cleared Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, between twelve A M. and six P M., no parking, you know, kind of thing, I'm just throwing it out, just to, as a compromise, and I just brought up, maybe staff would look at it, and it's an internal thing for David, I don't want to, there to be a.
I, I can have a look at, see if you juggle around.
Okay, good. I can't, I'm getting light, so, if I don't answer you right away, just wave, okay? Funds for gardenings, gardening symposium? Thank you, gentlemen. Isn't that you?
Maybe I can, maybe I can, it's, it's.
Okay, it's alright. We approved it, yeah. Property, property tax exemption bylaw, excuse me, go ahead, C A O?
Hey, your worship, uh, the property tax exemption bylaw is actually for persons with, uh, with low income, municipalities have the authority to, uh, set bylaws that, that provide, uh, grants to people who are below a specified income threshold, to assist them with their property taxes, so, every year, we, uh, we budget about thirty thousand dollars for this purpose, and every year without fail, we, we don't end up spending that entire amount, um, last year, it was, I believe we spent below twenty thousand of the thirty that we had allocated, uh, when Jerry and I look at that, we, we think about, you know, why that is, is it, is it that the income level is too low, or, or what, and, and so, we're proposing two amendments here, to the bylaw for this year, for your consideration, now, understand, today would not be first reading, first reading would have to happen at the regular council meeting, but this is for discussion today, and, and you could recommend it on to council if you, if you agree, or send it back to staff if you disagree, um, we are proposing to increase the income level to twenty-five thousand, so anybody below twenty-five thousand dollars would be eligible to apply, and to increase the amount of the individual grant eligibility for, to, up to seven hundred and fifty dollars. What we expect, or what we hope would happen, is that the full amount, uh, whatever it is that we end up budgeting this year, would be used, um, what happens if, if the number, if the amount of eligible applications exceeds the budgeted amount, is it's just prorated among the applicants, so there isn't a, a risk of running over budget, uh, by, by increasing either the grant or the low income threshold.
Councillor Mackay?
Thank you your worship, uh, Jeff, a couple years back, did you say it was thirty thousand dollars, a couple years back, did we decrease it, or did we increase it?
We did.
Yeah, and perhaps that wasn't a good thing, at the, we thought it was a good thing at the time, uh, because it was, we were in the same boat, the people wasn't accessing it, and decreasing it seems to be more sensible at this time?
Sorry, C A O?
Um, we may have increased it, say, from twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars, the, the size of the pool, uh, the, the reason.
You mean the financing part?
The amount of money available.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, I don't recall specifically when that was, or what, what we were considering at that time.
It's been two years, it's three years, yeah.
Last, last, yeah.
Yeah, but it, it has not been fully utilized, in any case, and, uh, certainly, you know, today, we, we know that the, um, the list of people who would be, um, you know, struggling to keep their taxes up, up to date, is, is longer than it was last year, and probably longer than it was a few years ago, so, what we looked at is, is just assuming that the amount of money available remained the same, uh, there seems to be a barrier to people accessing it.
Well, Jeff, I, I, I think that that's a great idea, and, and I'm glad, I'm glad that you and the finance manager have looked at this and, and brought it up, I think it's great, and it gives people an opportunity at a lower, lower level of, of income to apply for this, I, I think, I think it's great, thank you.
Okay, so are you looking?
Does it need to be a motion, if it show up on council, then it, this will last for a motion to you, or what?
Okay, good, thank you. Property tax, community spirit award. Put that on, did I put that on? Oh, I can't, I got a package on, on it here, anyway, so, what's that? Go ahead.
Thank you your worship, um, yeah, this was, a matter was referred by council to the Communities in Bloom, we are meeting in early February, and we have a group of people working on this, and, um, we will have a report back to council for its consideration, so we can nominate, uh, the town of Yarmouth will be nominated in March of two thousand and fourteen, deadline's the end of March, and we're putting together an application based on all of the initiatives we've undertaken the last two or three years.
Good.
If that's okay?
Yeah.
Thank you your worship, I'm, I'm drawing a blank, you have to help me, when did, when, when, when did council?
We did, there was no motion.
Yeah, I believe there was, it was referral to the Communities in Bloom, um, I think there was a discussion that we ended up with it, somehow we inherited, I think it was back in October, November, it came up for consideration now, and we're working on it now, on the other hand, if somebody else wants to take it over, great for me, I've got no problem there, we've got a lot of things on our plate, but, um, we do have two or three people just putting the application together, it's just a matter of drawing an application together, and, uh, putting in, uh, the, the Community Spirit Award, um, is given out by the province through the, through Lieutenant Governor Nova Scotia, it was, um, put in place by the previous Lieutenant Governor, um, is one of those things we never got around to, um, ever since the two hundred and fiftieth, we've been thinking we should be putting it in, because there's been an incredible amount of, of spirit in this community, be it the two fiftieth, be it C F A S, be it all of the activities we've done through the years, um, and then off late, a numerous other initiatives that are going on, so, I mean, we're a good candidate for it, and, uh, it's been suggested more than once that, uh, our community should be putting in for it, so, it's something that we're working on, and, uh, Councillor Dennis may want to add a few comments on it, she's on the committee, and so is, uh, Councillor Mooney, but, uh, we do have a group working on it, and they're supposed to report to our February meeting with the, with the report, and, once we get that, it'll be put in for the mayor's signature.
Good, anything else, Councillor Doss, you're late still on.
Oh, um, thank you, it, uh, I couldn't remember having done it, I think it's great, and, um, I think our all hands on deck, uh, is more, more than.
I just printed out the, uh, you have to put like four or five different, yeah.
Yes, I printed it out as well, it also is, it also is, uh, under who can nominate a community for the award, it says anyone living in or knowing of a community is to find, et cetera, et cetera, one person will be responsible for, for being the main contact for the nomination application, but many people may participate, um, nothing, nothing against Communities in Bloom, you do, uh, you do, do a nice job, but this is, uh, I would find it more fitting if the, if council itself.
So, yeah, so he just said it'll come back to council? They're gonna, they're just gonna do it up, and then council, it comes back to council for hours?
Oh, alright, well, I'm, I'm, I'm glad I asked, because I, that's why, that's why I was all confused.
It's all done.
Alright, thank you.
Good. Carnival, I got, I just got a letter last week from Derek Lesser, um, for, looking for funding, I don't know what anybody's thoughts are, but they get money from the room levy, and that's our money, so, I'm gonna know, but.
A problem with my computer here, so I don't know if I, the letters in this package, but is it for tournament, or for, uh, league, or for, for the team?
It is tournament, they, they do, they do this tournament every year, the Southwest Fusion Volleyball Club does a tournament, you're, you're.
Thank you your worship, uh, yeah, the, uh, this is a thing that we've sponsored for the last two or three years, we've been like the major sponsor, it brings in an incredible amount of people into Yarmouth, young people for this Carnival, Derek Lesser and, um, the team at Yarmouth Hive have been putting together, and I believe your worship, the request is for five hundred dollars, and I believe we're one of the prime sponsors of the event, it's, uh, an inexpensive event, it's a great sponsorship, and I think in light of our interest to get, especially in light of our presentations by recreation, to get more young people involved, physically active, it puts a sign out that our council is, is committed to help working with young people, so I'd make a motion that we grant five hundred dollars to Carnival.
So, moved and seconded? Just one, one second there, councillor, so, it's from, no, I just want to underst- I just need to understand, is the room levy not our money, and they get money from the room levy, that, that's our, can you answer that? Okay, uh, Councillor Mackay?
Is he gonna, is he gonna answer the question, or?
I just need a light.
Okay, yeah.
Alright.
Is there, is there a timeline on the, for the, request for the funding, I, I haven't, I never, I read the letter, but I forgot the date, how soon do they want the five hundred dollars?
It's March and April.
March and April, uh, have they got a request in for grants organizations?
So, the, the answer to that, it, within the letter, was that they didn't get it in because, because of the timing, so the club doesn't start until January, but it's an annual event.
No, that's right.
Every year.
That, that was, that was my, my next question to you, your worship, perhaps we could, uh, I, I am, I'm for the funding, but perhaps we could encourage them to sending a letter off every year, if they're looking for funding, to our grants organizations, that, that would fit better, we, we always make a, a strong suggestions to these nonprofit or profit organizations, that they do that, and don't put, you know, us on the spot, because there's money earmarked for this in, in the grants organizations, and this five hundred dollars, I don't know if we, if we have it or don't have it, is it going to come out of this year's budget, do we have it in this year's budget, or is it going to come out of next year's budget, uh, that's a question for the C A O.
Which, which you can.
And I'll just, I'll just shut my mic off, your worship, I'll wait for the answer.
Okay, go ahead, C A O.
Okay, just, uh, two comments. Um, I'd have to check and see if we have anything left in this year's grants, uh, allocation to be able to address that out of this year's money, uh, I don't know the answer to that question, the answer to the room levy question is that they have applied, but the room levy has not met, uh, to, to make a decision on that application, so they, they have no approval at this point from the room levy for, for the event.
Okay. Councillor Mooney?
And, and the C A O might correct me if I'm wrong, but the room levy, uh, makes her decisions on a different, a little different criteria than what we would hear at a council level, um, they come in with how many room nights with the application that, that would be used up in the town of Yarmouth, so it's more of a tourism or participation-based, um, grant of money, or giving out of money than what we do around here, around this table.
Go ahead, C A O.
Uh, they do collect slightly different information, uh, some of it's the same, some of it different, uh, but you're right, one of the bits they do collect is, is how many people are expected to attend, how many rooms are expected to be sold, uh, for the event, um, you know, as far as how they weigh those things out, you know, or how you weigh things out, uh, you know, I can't comment too much on that, uh, except to say that, you know, both groups are being asked, and, and receive somewhat similar information.
And I think, your worship, if, if I'm not?
Nope, go ahead.
So I sat on the room levy committee formally, and I know, um, that there's industry people make those decisions, and they take it very seriously on what, what's being brought into the community for room nights, and for, for money, so, um, I think it's almost comparing apple to oranges with this, but councillor Mackay's dead on the market, they know this is going to be an annual event, and it's the second or third one in a row, um, well, well, uh, I have no problem approving the money, but, tell them about the. the money, but tell them about the grants organization's process for next year and it's gonna be probably earlier again. So just give them a heads up. Thank you.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. So, this is not new. We've been, the town has, has...
Done this before.
Sponsored them before, thank you. How many years have, has the town been sponsoring them? The third year. Have they, each year have they just sent in a letter and they have never gone through the grant process? Well, perhaps they should.
But here's, here's, yes. I agree.
This is not news. I thought, I had exactly the same thoughts as Counselor Mackay's when I read it. I was also confused with the timing and the timeline. They can and they can't in January, yet they have already decided when it's going to start. So I was confused with what they were trying to convey in the letter. All that was clear was, please give us $500.
Okay. So they also, they said that they, they knew about the grants, but didn't apply because they don't start up till later. So how about this? How about if, if, I'll entertain a motion from one of you that we give the $500 this year, that a letter be sent to them, that they must go through the grant process next year.
I have a hard time with that.
Oh, did you make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
That, that we do that.
Yeah. And then we'll do another motion.
Was it that?
Just that.
This simply suggests they go to the transfer position next year.
And I think, when we, I'm sorry, your light's on. Go ahead.
I agree and I disagree with that. The, I have, the part that I disagree on is, they've been here before. They know that there are grant applications out there, that there's a deadline. And if we allow this through, we're setting just another precedent to let the others out there just try to come in under the deadline or just pass the deadline. And everyone will have valid reasons. That makes sense and we'll all agree. So, I'm caught with that. I agree but disagree at the same time.
You're gonna hit me up. I'll make it quick.
Yeah, go ahead. You're on.
Thank you, your worship. That's, that's good. I hear what, I hear what Counselor Dawes is saying, but just for a little bit more of history about people applying for funding and stuff, the tuna tournament from Westport was famous, famous for applying for late funding and we always gave it to them. And the last two years, we requested that they put into grants through organizations, but the final straw that broke the camel's back is that we did give them the funding and we strongly suggested that last year that we do want you to ask through the proper channels, otherwise it'd be no funding. And they have ever since. That was probably three or four years ago.
They've applied through the grants.
Yeah, they are now applying through the grant. In all fairness, the other organizations, this volleyball tournament was never asked, to my knowledge, to apply this way through the grants to organizations. And it's through probably my neglect not to bring it up every year. I forget, as they forgot, but it's still, still not too late. We could've went, we could've took it. But anyway, nevertheless, the letter of requesting that they apply through this grants organization is a valid one and I'd like to see that letter be sent. So I also agree with you, your worship.
Okay. Counselor Landau?
Thank you, your worship. And just to go on this, I mean, naturally, nobody around the room is gonna vote for it. Your choice exactly. The issue here is, is this group, as I think the letter indicates, forms in January normally. Our deadline was in December. And the difficulty is you're dealing with volunteers and it's very difficult for any group to send a letter in, Counselor Dawes, to us if they don't know they're gonna do it. So therefore, I would suggest the reason why was because of, at least this is the explanation that was given in the letter. They had just formed the group and whatever. Take it for what it is. I think the one thing, your worship, that we need to look at, and kind of on a side, but this is the third year this group has applied, but on Saturday, we'll be going through 51 presentations from different groups. I've been around this table for, going on nine years, in on and off, and the same groups are coming back every year. And I really think we need to start looking at a policy, either a wait-out year, a sit-down year, or some year, because it's basically almost identical proposals every year that people are coming in. And I hear Counselor Mackay's concern and I definitely echo, sure, put into the grants from an organization. This is a tournament. It's a little different than a grant because my understanding, and I confess I don't have the letter in front of me, was I believe they were looking at a sponsorship versus a grant to the organization, which is a little bit different. It's a semantic thing, I know, but a grant to an organization is a grant specifically to the organization. This is a sponsorship, which would be like running an ad in a publication. We do put aside in our grants to organizations $10,000 for that express purpose. That's why we each give the $70,000, keeping 10 in reserve for requests such as this. At least this is my understanding. So this is where this group clicks in. But if they think they're going to do this every year and they're gonna be seeking a sponsorship, and I think that's what this is. It's not really a, it's not a request to an organization where people come in, like many of the others we're gonna be meeting on Saturday, who are saying, "We want X, Y, or Z for our organization." This is actually a sponsorship application. So that's why I moved it without hesitation and go from there. Thank you.
I know, I think it's a great thing to do and it's not about, for me, it's not about the volleyball club. It's about the whole process. We really need to take a look at, I guess in 15 months, like every month, somebody comes in and wants money and wants money and we always say yes. So I guess we, well, most of the time, we say yes. Go ahead, Counselor Mooney.
And just to echo what Counselor Landau said, I think this is a parent-driven tournament. So I know Derek Lesser's the, the one constant over the last three years, but he's worked with, you know, 18 times three, 54 different sets of parents. So I think they had the meeting after the first of the year to decide whether they're gonna have a will or a way to have a volleyball tournament. But the one constant is Derek Lesser. To say next year with a different set of parents, they might not be able to wanna, to put in the work to put on a tournament. I know they're big events and the volunteer base is, is great around here, but this is, I think it's a little different than a grant to organization. More of a sponsorship.
It does say sponsorship.
Yeah. And I think it's a great, the last three years, as you know, you keep seeing sporting events around the province. You see the Coal Bowl in Cape Breton, largest basketball, high school basketball tournament in Canada. Started off very small. You see the Cema Tournament, the hockey tournament in Halifax over Christmas time is the largest, like the largest hockey tournament in Canada. And you have, you know, your worship being former president of the Soccer Association, Gunn Balderson in the valley. So hopefully one of these days, something like the Carnivali or one of these other things will catch and really put us on the map. Something like the Cook's Cup is another, another example that we supported loyally over the years. So I just find these just go hand in hand and I'm glad that a group like Derek Lesser's taking hold of it and involved other parents, students, athletes, and get people in here during off time, right? That's what we want.
Good. So there's a motion on the floor and the CEO's light's on. Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna point out that if you're considering this application, out of the grants fund for this year, that's fine. As far as them applying to make it in for next year, that consideration is Saturday. So we would need an application to consider within two days. And the deadline was, the deadline, right? So, so they're gonna, you'll be in the same position next year this time if we don't have something in front of us for Saturday to consider out of next year's money.
Questions?
Yeah, duh.
So, your worship, we should, maybe Counselor Landau or, you know, Derek or Counselor Mooney, or send them an email and send off a letter. We've entertained over the last few years, latecomers to, for grants organization. So I don't really think it's a, it's a big deal. We don't get a lot of them that are, that are truly late, but we do accept them. You know, but it's up to council if they wanna do that. But it, we wouldn't be in this jam for next year and there's, there are, there is $10,000 put aside for, you know, things like this when they come up. So it would be a better fit. It would, it would go this way and that's, I think it's the proper way and there's funding put aside for this, for these programs.
Okay, so I think we're in the process of sending an email off if I'm not mistaken. Okay, so questions being called on $500 to Southwest Fusion Volleyball Club. Questions been called. All those in favor, aye. Contrary. Motion carried. And this was not, I think I said that, this wasn't about the volleyball club. It's about trying to maybe get us more in line. I gotta say this too. Did we not, a while ago, we were going to put together a list of everybody that's applied for 200,000, 200 or 1,000 or $500? Thought we mentioned that. And then send out letters and say, "You need to apply." I can't remember if we did that or not. Yeah. Yeah. For everybody that applied for any amount of money? Yeah, okay. Yeah, all right. Okay. Alrighty. Carnivali, Community Health Board Support. That's Counselor Landau.
Thank you, your worship. Maybe council may or not be aware, but in the District Health Authority, we have four community health boards that look after, serves as a liaison between the general public and the health, Department of Health and the District Health Authority. These are volunteer boards and they're made up of community residents that are appointed to serve on these boards respective of their communities. These four boards are assisted by executive assistants that are part-time employees paid by the District Health Authority. There are four of these, one for Yarmouth, one for Clare, one for Shelburne, and one for Digby. It's my understanding that last Thursday, their services were terminated as a cost-saving measure by the District Health Authority. To me, this was a bit of a shock and a bit of a loss, simply because these executive assistants work with the boards and unfortunately, these boards, being volunteers, are made up of professional people for the most part, who have very busy schedules as volunteers with other groups, et cetera. They bring together people in that vein. So as a result, I would like to make a motion that the town of Yarmouth write a letter to the Honorable Leo Glavine, Minister of Health, expressing our disappointment of a recent decision by the local district health authority to terminate the services of the executive assistants off the community health boards and to encourage the minister to perhaps revisit that decision in the upcoming fiscal year. That would be my motion.
Move by Counselor Landau, seconded by Counselor Mackay's. Heard a discussion. Questions being called. All those, oh, sorry. Counsel, deputy mayor?
Ken, I was just wondering, as first I've heard of it, any more background than that? Just so, I don't want to agree on something. Philosophically, I agree with you, but I want to just hear any more background.
No, no problem, Jim. I had a call from, the local board is chaired by Heather McDonald, who is the executive assistant with Argyle Home Support, and by Rose Purdy, they're co-chairs. They were advised last week of this and I did get a call from Heather McDonald on the weekend regarding this because she was quite concerned. Well, Phil and I and Danny are on Argyle Home Support and she was, naturally, they can't get involved politically, but she was kinda letting people who are somewhat involved with health know that this has happened and the boards are expected to step up to the plate. There's been no formal announcement. Maybe Phil, I don't know whether you know anything further on this or not. I know Frazier's involved. There was no formal announcement. It was just, they were brought in, the various four EAs were brought in last Thursday and were simply advised that their services were no longer needed and necessary severance packages were drawn up and I guess that was it. Whether this is part of the new downsizing that the, that the new government is doing, I don't know. And other than that, Jim, that's all I know. And I know that the minister's gonna be in the area, so it gives us a chance to maybe revisit it. But they for sure have their walking papers. I did verify it with the local EA and she said, yes, indeed, that she was told that she was given for, I think it's four weeks notice and that her services will no longer be required.
And I think a lot of it, your worship, and I know my brother's a spokesman for the authorities, so he's not the decision-maker. He's a, he's a communications person, but I know the health authorities have just gotten their budget approved this year, just within the last week or two. And I know other district authorities across the province have taken under other, other cost-cutting measures. I know in, Ken, Phil, the day that the budget was announced or approved, they went up in their parking fees. I know in Cape Breton, they've done, done other things. So this could be part and parcel of, of the budget that came in or that was approved for the district. And, and we know, going through the budget process here this year, how tight things are. So I don't think I would wanna be doing the budget for the, any district health authority with the way the healthcare is these days and the aging population. So the minister is gonna be here on Monday. I think he's staying over Monday night, your worship, so it might be an opportunity for you to contact the MLA. I think he's meeting with some hospital people, but he's staying overnight.
Okay, because the only information I have is for Minister Fury to come on.
No, he's staying overnight and I don't know if he's doing a roundtable. I heard it through somebody in the profession that the minister was gonna be here. And he's staying overnight, I think Monday night, meeting with people on Tuesday. So if you can contact the MLA, your worship, and maybe have a chat with him about this and there might be some other issues. I know Counselor Dawes was talking about medical tourism and some other things, but I don't know. I think he's just gathering information on this one, but, you know, doesn't hurt to talk to him for half an hour or an hour. It's a good opportunity to get acquainted. Now Leo's a good guy, hired working minister and let's see what he has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I agree with, I agree with you, Phil. Before, before we do send off a letter, and I agree with you too, but before we do that, I would also like to know the reason why. I'm sure they have a reason why. They wouldn't go ahead and, and, and... I think so. And I'm sure it's legitimate, but I would prefer to hold back on a letter until we find out exactly why. And if then...
I'll give you the call, I think, Counselor. Will you, EA's number even call for it?
I may talk to the person you said, you said budget.
What, what, what would we, what would we accomplish by sending off the letter? He has to reconsider his budget?
What's the, what's the...
No, I'm in favor. All I'm saying is, we didn't hear about it. We're sure that they have reasons. You're gonna be speaking with them. You're gonna be meeting with them. I would say, hold off until you've met with them. Maybe, maybe there's more information that we could add to the letter. That's all I'm saying. Just a little more to consider.
Yeah, it's just a recommendation to council, anyway. So we'll see what, most...
Yeah, I get you, February 13th, this is payable. So, by February 13th, I mean, by voting today, Counselor, you're simply supporting until the 13th this letter.
Which outside?
Until the 13th. Counselors, until the 13th.
Anything else?
Questions?
We good? Are you good?
Sure.
Questions being called. All those in favor, aye. Contrary. Motion carried. Update on terminal reservation, renovations.
Yeah.
Like to have that too. Okay? You have that, Counselor Landau? We're on track. That was your answer.
Thank you, your worship. I did get a, I'm not on the Waterfront Development Corp and all these other lovely agencies that do all this hard work. However, I did get some calls and I think many of us have. And I understand there was an update and if even, you don't need, I don't expect it orally, even if the CEO, if something in writing can send it to me, then I can pass it on to the individuals that were concerned. Apparently, there was some concern that we may not be on schedule, but I understand from a memo that we are on schedule, that everything is good for May the 1st and things are happening.
I think, I think it's even in the Vanguard. It's even, it's even in the Vanguard. Go ahead, CEO.
Thank you, your worship. I did circulate a very brief email and that's, we received a verbal report of those specific words at the Industrial Commission last week, so I don't have anything additional to, to share in writing or verbally, other than those, those words, on time and on schedule, but very tight. tight.
It's all there, it's long. Is there any long?
Go ahead.
That the contract for cleaning up of the terminal has been completed, and now they're into the infrastructure on the insides and stuff, and things are going according to plan. That's what was said at the meeting, that's right.
Good. Hours of street cleaning, that's done. Okay, so addition, seven I, expense report memo. That you, CAO?
Yeah, okay.
You need it?
Thank you, your worship. So there was a direction from Council for staff to look into an appropriate way to report expenses, and so I did some looking around on other municipal websites, and the best example that I was able to find was Halifax's own Mayor Savage has a page on the Halifax website where he lists all of his meetings that he attends, where expenses are incurred, and he reports the amounts under, I think it's five different categories, and that is there for the public to see, and so as far as advising you, I think that's the best model that I saw, and I think that if we can do as well as the best, then that's probably good on us. So we can do that effective April 1st, which I think was Council's direction. In the meantime, we do have an expense policy that we'll be reviewing with the Bylaw Policy Committee and bringing back to Council for consideration, which hopefully, we can do that to coincide with that reporting.
Good, Councilor Landau?
CAO, do we need a motion to go in that direction? I know we gave you direction in a motion, so I'd like to make a motion that we proceed to follow the model that's being used by HRM for the posting of Council and Mayor expense claims on our website, effective April the 1st, 2014.
I second the motion, your worship.
Moved and seconded. We gotta adopt a new expense policy first. Okay, alright, alright.
My question...
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried. That's alright, that's... J, Minister Furey's visit. So I didn't, wasn't aware of the Health Minister, but Mark Furey will be here 1:30 on Tuesday, right here, in the, right here at Town Hall, so if there are any questions, I was just putting it out there. For questions from Minister Furey. Yeah. Or, yeah, okay.
He'll be here next week.
He'll be here, yeah, he'll be here next week. But I mean, if there's any questions or anything for him. Minister of Health, that would be you, Councilor Mooney?
Well, I think we took care of...
Okay.
I think we took care of that earlier, your worship, maybe contact the MLA. I know the minister will be here overnight, so I don't think he's gonna be having meetings until 12 o'clock, but it might be a great opportunity to talk about the problem, or the situation that Councilor Landau brought up. Councilor Dawes had some concerns, I know. The other thing is, the minister announced a roundtable on doctor recruitment and retention. I think there's 11 people on that committee, I don't know if there's anybody from Yarmouth, so that might be another question that you can ask the minister. You know, the problems that we have recruiting and retaining doctors, it might be a great opportunity to discuss that with them, and I know there's probably some questions from the Health Human Resource Committee that you sit on, your worship, that could be helpful in that thing, because I don't know whether, CAO, how many other municipal units have a Health Human Resource Committee like we do? Or different forms?
Different forms, most outside of metro, I think has...
Yeah. Yeah, so it might be a great opportunity, if you contact the MLA to have a sit-down with the minister.
Good, thank you. Councilor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. Your worship, there's another issue, and it's an issue that I'm sure when people go visit their loved ones, or are asked to lend a hand with their loved ones, and for you, you should be new to, you're not new to this. It's happened to you, visiting your husband and that, when he was in the hospital, and myself, and everybody, this affects everybody in Nova Scotia, but I'm only talking about the town of Yarmouth. The parking lot fees. Now, I know, I know that, I know the reason why, that it was told to me, is because they don't budget enough, the government doesn't give them enough money, so they have to be creative and find funding. So I guess my question would be to ask the minister, is there a way that it can be made affordable for people, or there can be some sort of a card, or a something to help people when they go for blood work, or have to make visits to the hospital to see their doctors or their loved ones, that they should be, have to pay to go to the hospital to go get their blood work, to go get x-rays, to go visit their loved ones? If they have to go two or three times a day, that's $3 every time they go. Is there a method that could be looked at, could be used? I know he's a new minister, but if we don't ask the questions, we'll never know on behalf of the citizens in the town of Yarmouth. It's a, it's a, not a pet peeve, but it's something that concerns me, because a lot of people on fixed incomes, and people that are on social assistance, cannot afford $3, or cannot afford $6, or $9, or $10, if they gotta go three or four times a day.
People who make money can't afford $10.
No, no, and I'm not saying that they shouldn't charge for their parking lot. If I was a paid employee there, I'd have no problem paying $25 or $30, but I think that the taxpayers of Nova Scotia already pay in the taxes that we pay for HST and PSD. I think we are, we pay enough as it is. It's gotta be made very strong to the minister that it is a hardship on anybody in Nova Scotia, but especially for us down in southwest Nova Scotia. When you look at the income base, it's mainly senior, we're senior-based, and not only seniors, but people on, you know, on fixed incomes that are just getting to be seniors, like myself. And I've had the unfortunate pleasure of having to go to the hospital three, four times every day for the last six or seven weeks the year passed. And it is expensive, but if you want to see your loved ones, you either have to pay up, or find some other place to park your car, and get harassed by whatever parking people are out there. So anyway, is there something that you could put together, your worship? You think this might be the appropriate time, or would you like to do this, and get some more information on this, and perhaps do it at a later date? I leave it in your...
My list.
Okay, thank you, your worship. But I think everybody here can appreciate that, but it's just, $3 might not seem like a lot, but if you go there three or four times a week, which some people do, it's a costly venture. Thank you, your worship.
Okay. Did we take care of the other motion? Which was? There wasn't one?
There wasn't one.
That was just Councilor Mooney's questions. I've got a couple questions here yet, okay? Mayor Woolfield, that you...
Mayor Woolfield, your worship, and I don't think we need a motion for this, but I'd like the town of Yarmouth to send a letter of condolence to the town of Woolfield for the, on the death of their longtime mayor, Bob Steed, who was a great activist, not only along municipal levels, but with the municipal alcohol strategy, and he was a great friend when we were doing the international ferry fight, so on behalf of our town, do their town a letter of condolence, please?
Any discussion, questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, carried. Let's do that before the committee of the whole, or before Council. Yeah, my, tax exemption. Who was that? This was your...
Your worship. Thank you. Now, I got a copy of the letter to the editor that Sue Hutchins from the Axe Committee, and yourself's on the bottom, and Michael Taveras, and I have a question, and it's probably to the CAO, and they're talking about, I think this letter's a little one-sided, because I have the proposal that went to the Zion Baptist trustees, and there's no mention of here of asking for $250,000 in this proposal, but one of the conditions was a tax exemption, and waiving of a deed transfer tax. Now, how do we do tax exemptions? And what about the deed transfer tax? Because I know with tax exemptions with the museum, golf course, the Yarke are all provincially mandated or provincially legislated. I know my father did one for the Yarke in the 70s. The one from the Claracaya Estate was in 1907 or 1908, so those lands are given back to the town of Yarmouth if the golf course ever goes under to be used for recreational purposes in perpetuity. So I'm just wondering, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the Zion Baptist Church, but I'm just wondering about, one of the conditions is, can they meet, or can we grant? Because I didn't think we could too unilaterally grant deed transfer taxes, write-offs, or bring tax exemptions to properties. I thought they would have to go through the same process that the Knights of Columbus does, the Lions Club, and some of the other organizations that we do. So can, just the first part first?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Taveras, that corresponded with me back in December, asked me two questions. One was about the deed transfer tax, which I contacted the solicitor, and the short answer on that is, if the property was transferred for a dollar to an arm's length to a third party, then it wouldn't attract deed transfer tax. So that was conveyed to Mr. Taveras, is that under those conditions, they wouldn't attract that tax. The second question about the tax exemption, the property tax exemption, I addressed myself, that we don't currently have a property tax exemption bylaw. We certainly have the authority to have one, and we used to have one, but Council, and I recommended it at the time, did away with the bylaw four or five years ago, I think you may have been the mayor at the time, and we went to a system where grants were provided instead of exemptions, so people can come in and ask for a grant, and many times, Council has granted grants to offset tax expenses, and I advised Mr. Taveras of the current process, the deadline, and he didn't name the third-party organization that was considering receiving the property, but I did suggest that they should make the application if they're serious. I didn't go through the stack for Saturday to see if we had received one. If there is no application, then you have nothing to consider on that.
And the other question, common line with that, I know there's a problem out in Brooklyn when the Episcopal Corporation of Yarmouth sold a piece of property to, I don't think I have my light on, everyone, thank you, your worship.
I'm sorry, I'm just still, my name's on the bottom of that?
When the Episcopal Corporation of Yarmouth, well, the Episcopal Corporation of Yarmouth and Halifax sold a piece of property, or the old Brooklyn Church, to a business or a company, and they were quite surprised that the next year that they got a tax bill. How does it work with, and I'm just using these guys as an example, is Zion Baptist Church for taxation purposes? Once a building stops being used for worship or for church facilities, is the tax exemption null and void? Or is that to the solicitor?
So...
Now you know why you're here, Greg.
Just remember what I just came up with.
Have a bite, Greg.
That's a question I had from somebody in the public, that's not my own, your worship.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that's up to the province. Their churches are taxed, are exempt from property taxes, so the, under the Property Evaluation Service Corp., if it's used as a church, it has an assessment, but it wouldn't have a tax that would be payable, but if it stops being used as that, then it would get assessed on its, whatever its current assessment would be, for whatever, whether it's commercial or residential, I'm not sure what the current assessment is, but it would receive its current assessment. But how long it takes, that's up for Property Evaluation Service Corporation to determine whether that'll take place this year, or when.
Were you gonna ask a question?
Yep. Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I got a copy of that as well yesterday, the press release, or whatever it was, from Ms. Hutchins, I believe it was a letter to the editor, I'm not sure, I was...
Yeah, I have it in front of me with my name listed on it.
I did notice, I was gonna ask about that, but I'll wait for that for a minute. I did take the liberty, upon reading it, I was kind of concerned with some of the allegations that were stated in the letter, and I took it upon myself to call Mr. Jess last night and Mr. Pittman to find out what on earth is going on, and if this indeed is true. And again, I welcome anyone on Council to phone either of the gentlemen, and they did send me some information by email. The bottom line is, is that, and I know it's none of our business, I mean, Zion Baptist Church is no longer a church, it's now a structure, they had their last service on December 29th, and Mr. Jess, just for the information, a counsel informed me yesterday, and this was verified by Mr. Pittman, that there was discussion with the Heritage Trust of Nova Scotia, and an offer was made by the Board of Trustees to Heritage Trust, that they would allow them to use the facility for a period of five months, up until the end of June 2014, as per their request, and they basically were honoring the suggestion that Heritage Trust asked for. That seems to be what was left to me with, the impression I got from Mr. Jess and Mr. Pittman. The church requested that the decision be made by January 6th of 2014. The church did not hear, the trustees did not hear by January 6th, so they assumed that the matter was dead, and they began to do what they have to do. On January 16th, they did receive a letter of offer from a group known as the Arts and Culture in the Tri-counties Society, I guess Axe, with, I guess Larry Devoe was the president of the organization, and a number of board officers. They indeed sent a request in, a letter of offer to the church. The letter of offer, which I can, I'm a little bit reluctant to share, because I'm gonna ask the CAO, if I share a letter to Council, is that a public document? Because that's, it was kind of a personal thing, so I'm a little nervous to share that, so however, if any of the councilors want to see it privately, I'll be more than willing to do that. Mr. Pittman was just concerned that it becomes public, and that some of the terms in there are public, but the bottom line, as Councilor Mooney pointed out, the church found unpalatable was a requirement. The idea was, is Axe would take the building for one year. In turn, Heritage Trust of Nova Scotia would pay the operating costs. After one year, if they could not find a use of the facility, Zion would, the trustees would then get the building back, and they could do with it as they want. So it was basically a one-year hiatus while the Axe group decided to get their ducks in a row. The church's concern was, is part of the agreement were two things, as Councilor Mooney alluded to. One was the deed transfer tax and the property exemption, and the second was, the church was required to post a $250,000 bond, which would be available to Axe should the trustees fold to handle any demolition costs of the building. That was the intention. So it was a $250,000 bond that was required there, and the church trustees found that a little bit difficult to swallow, so consequently, they have not responded to the request from Axe. The other problem was that the lawyer for the Zion Baptist Church trustees did chuck into the group, and the group legally doesn't exist, their incorporation under the Societies Act has been revoked for non-payment, so there was some concern as to the even legitimacy of the group, and maybe the solicitor can talk about that, but it's up to him. So bottom line is, is unlike the press release, which unfortunately, Mayor Moot, your name is on...
Well, it's gonna be off in about 30 seconds.
We had a feeling. Anyway, the issue was that, as far as the group is concerned, and Mr. Nickerson, their solicitor, was concerned, this matter is just a dead issue, and it's disappointing that the group in a press release, or letter to the editor to the Vanguard, is suggesting community outcry, when they're not really telling the whole story, and it's unfortunate because there were some terms that the trustees did find unpalatable. So I only felt, in fairness, and the only reason, and I thank Councilor Mooney for bringing it up today, and the only reason why I dug a little bit last night, is with all respect to you, Mayor Moot, your name was on the press release, and I'm thinking, are we involved in this somehow? And they're making reference to all hands on deck, and all this sort of thing, and I said, oh geez, what are we doing here?
If he hasn't said...
Anyway, so I'm just leaving it to you.
I wouldn't have known. So, yeah, yeah. See, I just gotta read more carefully. You just, I get so much, that it's, how'd that happen? Okay, who's that? Councilor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I have a question for the solicitor to go back to, when I said, please don't turn your lights off. Now, does this building have to house a full-time place of worship only to qualify? Or could it also, could any edifice qualify that would have, that would offer the occasional, let's say, multi-denominational? let's say, multi-denominational possibilities, where people can come and worship, let's say, four, five, six, three times a year?
Well, there's a, there is a definition of, in the Assessment Act, as to properties that are exempt from taxation. And there's a number of categories, schools, colleges, every church and place of worship and the land use in connection therewith. It doesn't really have much of, you know.
Their definition.
Specifics as to how much time, but that's not for the town to decide, to be frank, that's for the province. The province and Property Evaluation Service Corporation determines whether a property's exempt or not.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's not up to the town.
I was just asking, because I had, I had a question, I thought about it.
So, I mean, there's nothing this council can do to affect or have any input on whether, you know, that property continues to be exempt from taxes. It either will be or it won't be, and that's for Property Evaluation Service Corp. to determine, so.
Absolutely, and I never, I never assumed that we would. I just wanted clarification on a thought of question I had. Thank you very much.
I would sure love to know the truth. I really would love to know, you get, I got fifty, I know, but you know what? That's from one story, then you get another story from this party, and you get your name signed to the letter. And then councillor Mooney, you're up.
Thank you, your worship. And there, there is a political answer for the, for the ACTS group, if they want to go that way. I know when this situation came up two or three years ago, and councillor Landjo, as the Chair of the Heritage Advisory Committee, we contacted the premier's office, and the premier was, had his political people work on it, and they came back, and there was an excess of a million dollars that could have been access to use to restore the building on Parade Street. That was a political solution to a, to a problem that we had. They wanted to know if there was a use or community use in the town of Yarmouth for that facility, and at that time, there wasn't. So they were more worried about upkeep, so I don't know, that went through the premier's office, so I don't know what, what departments he used to access funds, what people were in place, but I think that was a political answer, that he had the wherewithal to get something done. So maybe with, maybe the group that Larry DeVoo and these people should contact, or MLA, contact Stephen McNeil, the premier of the province, and see if there is a political solution to to save the building. Because here at the municipal level, our, our hands are tied, right? When it comes to all the other things that we talked about today with, with financing. Let's get this out of the trustees' hands and get it into the province. They had a solution at one time, or the previous NDP government had a solution at one time. Let's see if Stephen McNeil can deliver and do the same thing for this solution, or this problem.
Thank you. Councillor Landjo?
Thank you, your worship, not to belabor this, but I think the important thing to note is that time is ticking here for everybody, and councillor Mooney is dead on. He was aware as mayor that there was discussions going on with the province at the time, and the province did indicate assistance for the building. The difficulty was, is upkeep and maintenance. And I mean, the reality is, we have a building that will house three hundred and seventy-five, four hundred people in a performance theater setting. We have the Yarmouth Yark, which can house two seventy-five. We have the Grand Hotel, which is a convention center that'll house around four hundred. And we have the Mariner Center, which is even more, even more than that. And plus, we now have on top of that, the new school at Paramba with the theater there. So the community is well-served with theaters. We tried, we exhaustively tried, contrary to media reports, we, we met with the Arts Center, we met with the museum, we met with all different ACT groups to see whether or not there was a use. And the CAO was first in that, and you as mayor were.
Actually, just if I could, just a second. We actually met to curator and director of the Museum of Nova Scotia.
Yes, we did.
Or Art Gallery of Nova Scotia.
Yes.
To do his networking of people across North America.
Yes.
And see if there's a solution to this problem. So we went above and beyond the arts community, went to the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia.
Yeah.
Their curator and director, and he reached out to his people across North America.
Yeah.
And come up with a solution.
We, we tried. I mean, your worship, it's been exhausting for the Heritage Committee membership. We've tried every possible avenue, and I mean, nobody wants to see that building come down, nobody. But the reality is, is what do you do? I mean, we can only do so much. And I think councillor Mooney, you're dead on, I mean, if the province has appetite, step in. But the difficulty is going to be, is not so much the money, you know, back in the day, as we say, was available to fix the building up. The question was, who's gonna keep the building up? Once the building has been fixed, and our CAO and I and and the mayor at the time and several councillors, we talked about it, what do we do with it? They offered it to us at one point, you know? What do we do with it, and where do we afford the fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year plus to heat, maintain, et cetera, et cetera, this particular structure? And that's, that was the whole, whole problem. I commend the ACT group, I think they're doing a wonderful job, and if they feel it's such a good thing, I mean, it's an individual community thing. Ante up fifteen, twenty thousand a pop, put it into the building, fix it up and use it. That's my view. But I, I take real exception to the letter that was published by the Vanguard. I mean, I'm a bit of a journalist myself, I'm pleased to say, and I believe in balanced journalism, and that letter was very disturbing. I, I think, with all due respect, your worship, it put all hands on deck in a political arena, which is something I don't think you wanted, your worship, for that group to be involved in. And with all due respect to you, your worship, it threw you under the bus as well. You know, so, so it's unfortunate, and I'm glad that you've taken the steps to have yourself removed from that, because that's very unfortunate. So anyway, just, those are my two cents worth.
Okay. Where am I? Prince Charles.
Prince Char-
That's you.
Prince Charles, yeah.
Go ahead.
Principal.
Go ahead, principal.
Reading the newspaper the other day, your worship, they said there's gonna be a royal visit this spring by Prince Charles and Lady Camilla, and they said the itinerary hasn't been set yet, or they're still working on it, so there might be an opportunity to talk to the protocol office and see if there's an opportunity for the king-to-be to come down to Yarmouth.
That's a good idea.
So, did you see your cousin? I'll make that a motion, your worship, and we send a letter to the protocol officer inquiring about, inquiring about the status of Prince Charles's visit to Nova Scotia.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion. Question's been called, all those in favor? Contrary, motion carried.
YMCA.
Did you add YMCA?
Yes, he did.
So I must, seven oh, YMCA.
YMCA, your worship.
Go ahead.
Just a question on the grants to organizations, CAO, on Saturday, that the YMCA's put a request in for fifty-nine thousand dollars. Is that fifty-nine thousand dollars more? Because I know they're a line item in our budget, but is that, or they want thirteen thousand above the forty-six that we already give them?
Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, they, they, they have historically been a line item in our budget, and in order to give you, I guess, an opportunity to ask questions of them and to receive information from them, we've just simply scheduled them on the same day. They won't be coming from the eighty thousand pool. Their request, as, as you've received, is what they're requesting to be in that line item in the town's budget.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't hear on that, I'm sorry, I'm getting old. Does that mean that we're looking at two, two significantly different requests?
Yeah, two, two separate pools, really. Everyone else that you, that you have applications from will come out of the grants to organizations pool. But historically, the YMCA has been a line item within the town of Yarmouth budget, and so they're, they're coming and making a proposal for what that line item ought to be, what the amount ought to be, and they'll answer any questions that you have on Saturday concerning that. So it won't be, you won't be, they won't be competing with the likes of Carnivale kind of thing for, for the same pool. They're asking you to put that line, that number on their line in the town of Yarmouth budget, and that will be part of your budget consideration.
Thank you. Okay, good. Yeah.
Since we, since being old and bordering on senility, when we do the spreadsheet, can we make sure that it's quite clear that some of us don't, you know, I mean, there was a little confusion last year with taxation and whatever. I'd like it to be, you're, you're not dealing with a real full deck of cards here, so I, I want to, want to make sure that I don't make any mistakes, okay? Thank you.
That's on record now.
Good.
Oh, it's on record that every person that voted you into your chair is now.
So we have, we're going.
You're not dealing with a full deck of cards.
Oh, they knew it already.
Correspondence.
How did you guys get elected?
Correspondence for Action. Okay. Correspondence for Action Agricultural Society Refences and Detention of Stray Livestock Act. Go ahead.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, so, the, what you have here is, is a request from the Department of Agriculture wondering if we want to be designated under the Fences and Detention of Stray Livestock Act, and they've included also Fences and Impounding of Animals Act, which would no longer apply if you are designated. Seems to me like a, an old but cute piece of legislation, with fines in the area of four dollars, eight dollars. Don't see it having much, much strength, whereas the, the Fences and Detention of Stray Livestock Act seems a little more up to date. We don't have many fences and livestock within the town, but there are some, and it might be, I'll ask the solicitor if it's advisable that we, that we be so designated.
Is that your recommendation, just?
Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, worship. Do they have an act or a bylaw that covers stray animals or, or impounding animals and cruelty to animals, like what we, what, what we've seen in the past? Animals just being left out in the cold? Is there anything, anything that they have on their books on that?
The fox?
Yes.
I'll defer to the solicitor, but I think there is.
We don't have any livestock in our backyards, but many people do have dogs and cats.
We actually do, we actually do have some livestock. Horses, horses fall into that, and we do have horses kept in the town of Yarmouth. So we do have some livestock. But as far as the animal cruelty, I think that's a sep, that is separate legislation at the provincial level.
That's the act. There is a separate animal cruelty act.
That's administered by the province.
Is that your answer?
Yeah.
So if we see animal cruelties, we then address, address that province suit?
Department of Natural Resources.
Thank you. Councillor Mackay-Zee?
Yeah, thank you, worship. My question's to the, for the CAO. Do we have any that meet this, meet what you just asked? Grandfathered in the town of Yarmouth, like for, some people have horses, some people have goats, some people have sheep. I know two or three people, yes, sheep. Some people have sheep that they bring over to their properties. So would that be something we ought to look at before we say yes, no, or whatever? Because there are some people that I can think of, one place out on Regent's, is it not Regent Street? Some on Regent Street, some out on the Haley Road, and some on Vancouver Street, at different times of the year. So before we say no, we should perhaps look into it? Have the grandfather clause bit, that's what I'm thinking. We wanted to protect the, the livestock, we also want to protect the, the citizens of the town of Yarmouth, so these livestock don't get out. I know there was one incident where one of them got out last, last year. Some livestock got out last year, and they haven't been recovered, last they were seen with footprints on the ice at Lake Malo, so we don't know where they went after that.
This, this being designated under the ACT would actually, would be beneficial to, to residents of the town who don't own that livestock, for just those situations where the livestock are not properly fenced. This would give us, I'll say, appropriate authorities to, to deal with that.
Motion.
Yeah. As far as the, the ability to have livestock within the town, there are some provisions within the land use bylaw where it is permitted or, or grandfathered.
Grandfathered.
Yeah.
So are you recommending that we?
Recommending that you, that you recommend the council to, to be designated. And I should mention as well, there was a, there was a deadline in the letter, but that deadline was extended, so there is time to do this at the February meeting.
So what, you need the motion right now?
You do need a committee, though, right? You have to establish sort of fences arbitration committees.
Yeah. Now, we have to appoint one person to the committee, and the Federation of Agriculture, I believe, Greg, appoints the other person? And our appointee becomes the chair, so there's an opportunity there.
I'm, I'm, I'm worried about.
Yeah, councillor Mackay-Zee?
Thank you, worship. I would make that a recommendation on the, as the CAO just, on his recommendation from the report that he just read, that we adopt that at the next council meeting.
Can you be on that committee?
No, I won't be on that committee. But we'll, we'll, we'll decide that, and I, I'm only making the recommendation that, that we adopt it, and, but I'm not, I'm not prepared to sit on the committee, so I don't, no, that's, you're second in motion, yeah? And I nominate Jim for second in motion. Thank you, worship.
I'll second that. Question, your worship.
Okay, question's been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Aye.
Motion carried. Jerry, we're gonna go back to you, we have a question for you. CAO?
Question number one. Did you have an opportunity this morning, I didn't get to see before we started to look for the fifteen thousand? Did you?
On the, one of the items on your agenda is the property tax exemption bylaw for the low income.
Yep.
We spent sixteen thousand of our thirty thousand budget in there this year. So I, that's just one of the lines that I know won't be spent in the next three months, so.
So there's fifteen right there. Thank you.
Our vote was in. What about Jerry, you're good man? You get your raise.
Again.
Okay.
We have money in the bank, Jerry, we're okay.
We good?
We have money in the bank, yes.
We need payroll.
We will need payroll, yes.
So we're down to David Oly?
We're in trouble. You don't speak.
No, I'm just trying to finalize December, like, the last day or two, it's not done yet.
Oh, sorry, councillor.
Oh, no, I just put it on, your worship, because you wouldn't see it. I, just two things, Jerry. Number one, the new counting software, where are we standing with that?
We're working with, with the group right now. Our intention is to go live April first.
Perfect.
So that's the best cutoff for our auditors as well, because then they can audit one system for the current year and one system for the new year. So that's our intention, and we're working on, towards that.
Secondly, about a year ago, I believe, it could have been less or longer, I can be corrected, a motion was passed by council that on our tax bill, we put a graph, pie graph, like many areas do, to show what portion of taxes go where. Will we be able to do that in the tax bills of this year? That's something we, now with our new software, it would be great to show our residents.
For sure. What this software actually does, and what other municipalities do using this software, is on the back of the bill, they'll show basically a percentage of your tax bill that goes where. So we'll, we just have to input the different percentages, and then everyone's tax bill is different, so everyone puts in a different amount. For education, for instance, if our, if our tax revenue is ten percent, I'm picking that out of the air, so don't quote me on that, but whatever percentage say education is, if someone's tax bill is a thousand dollars, and if it's ten percent, a hundred dollars would show was education, if it's a two thousand dollar tax bill, they'll show two hundred dollars going towards education. So it's by a percentage.
And a final question, I received my tax assessment the other day, delighted to hear that my property's gone down four hundred dollars. Probably means a two cent saving this year, which is exciting. Have you received anything from PSVC, or whatever they're called?
Yes.
Where we are standing with regard to the assessed values, and what impact do you think that's gonna have on what we have to spend in the new fiscal year?
It's, it's gonna be kind of what we expected. Our actual residential tax, taxable assessment, what we tax on, has gone up, I think I said, by seventeen hundred dollars, Jeff? Seventeen hundred dollars in residential tax rate taxable. And on the commercial side, it's two, one and a half percent, I believe? I forget the, it's a small amount.
It's a great amount?
Yes.
So we're working with the same amount?
We're basically working with the same tax dollars as last year.
Okay.
Good?
Question, please.
CPI Nova Scotia, we, we looked at that as, is just under one percent. However, that doesn't necessarily relate directly to the kinds of things that we buy. So some things we, we've, for instance, our collective agreements, our wage settlements, they're set, they're above one percent. Fuel, we use a fair amount of fuel, energy costs. Other things that we buy, though, we have a little more control over. For instance, if we set a budget for patch paving, it's, it's a fixed number. And so what that means is if, if the cost of patch paving goes up by more, more, well, it goes up at all, we'll get less done for the same money. We won't, you know, unless you approve it, spend more money. So it's going to be a, another challenging year in setting the, the budget for the town, but, you know, we've, we've been through it before, we'll get through it. But you'll, you'll be faced with some, some decisions. And that's part and parcel of why we're trying to get the priority setting done concurrently is to help you with that.
Just paving a road here, pardon the pun. So we basically have the same assessed values, more or less. However, we do have an increase due to inflation, and we will have increased salary costs because our percentage, there has been some raises and some arbitrations, et cetera, et cetera. On the other hand, we do have some major loans that, there has been a couple of loans that have been paid, so that's not being paid out, I believe, or we, we're a little bit helpful there. So you say it's going to be very tight, so there's no question, we've got to watch our dollars. Okay, good, thank you, Your Worship, I appreciate it.
Any more questions for finance?
Okay.
Anything else you want to tell us?
Good job, Jerry.
No, my, like I said, my only comment to Counselor Landau's question is when I look at our budget, there's a few big things that we spend money on. One is, one is our RCMP contract, and that obviously doesn't go up by just 1% per year. So that'll go up more than what we generate in revenue. And again, like, like the CAO has mentioned, we do spend a large dollar on fuel, large dollars on electricity, and then another big one, obviously, is salaries and wages. So they all will go up by more than what our revenue will go up. So there'll be cutbacks or reductions in other places.
So you're going to take a...
Question. Yeah.
Of course.
Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. My question...
Along with counsel.
My question's for the CAO. Has there ever been any thought given to do energy efficient, efficiency testing to any or all of the municipal buildings that we own? I know there's grant money, or there's money out there. I know for the metal fields, we, as a board member, along with Counselor Mooney, Counselor Landau, we gave, and the rest of the board gave permission to, to the director to seek information for energy sufficiency, you know, evaluation. So has there been any thought, or is there any process, or you've been thinking about doing that?
CAO?
Thank you, Worship. We did that about three years ago. And unfortunately, well, I'll say, let me be optimistic first, is we found some areas and we were able to do some retrofitting of, of things in this building and in other buildings that we own. Unfortunately, there weren't huge opportunities, you know, to save a lot of money, but a lot of little opportunities. And so we've, we've been nibbling at those. We, we had, I think every light in this building's been changed. This is, this building is electrically heated and cooled, so there may be more efficient ways, energy efficient ways to do that, but we haven't, we haven't gone that far as far as, you know, changing entire heating or cooling systems.
Would that be an exercise worth looking into, to see if there's any funding partners that we could do this? I mean, if, if it's out there, I think we...
Yep.
We ought to look at it.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, thank you, Worship.
Good.
Jerry, please.
Jerry, go ahead.
I was just going to mention the LED light project, that's specifically why, or one of the reasons why we're doing that, but it'll reduce our bills.
The Mariner Center's...
The Mariner Center's the same thing, yeah.
Okay, where are we? David Oly Rehonorarium. We have a letter here. Is this for...
Oh, that's just a motion for council to approve the honorary...
Okay.
To approve the honorary.
So moved and seconded. Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Nova Star Cruises Destination Industry Opportunity. Go ahead, Counselor.
I noticed that, Your Worship, just glancing at it. I believe that's a suggestion for an advertisement in their onboard magazine that they have. And it might be something, you know, I'm not sure what we do with something like that, but it's something we may want to consider somewhere. But I don't know what's going on with YASDA. Maybe Counselor Dennis can comment if there's going to be a presence in that magazine or not. It would be nice to see a presence in the magazine, especially since we're the point of entry coming in here. And what I'm referring to is not the usual who's on council and what we do, but it would be like some of the things that are available for people in the town of Yarmouth to do, be it our museums, be it our walking tours, whatever, whatever. I think it would be something that we may want to look at, but I don't know whether Counselor Dennis is prepared to discuss what YASDA's intents are, or how this all fits in, but it is, looks like an interesting opportunity, and I thought a little discussion might be in order on that, Your Worship.
Okay. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh...
Oh, I'm a... Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship, but just to comment on, I've, I've been following an email thread, I guess in terms of YASDA. YASDA hasn't yet to deal with this, but the discussion among the board members, at least by email, is they're looking at potentially, the suggestion is two full pages, full color.
Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just, just a thought, and I'm going back, I'm going back when there used to be three boats here, but there was two boats and one boat. And way back then, they seen, the Tourism Association of that day, and it was in your Father's Day, Phil, they used to have a person on the ship representing Nova Scotia. And what they would do on there, they would show, you know, movies, films about tourist attractions in, in different places. That should be given some thought. I don't know who would be the person or the people to go with this, but if we had people on the ship that was giving out, had a booth on the ship for the six months that they're in operation, like they, they used to have that. Other, other people on, on the ship, there used to be another agency on the ship that used to rent and rent and sell hotels and motels across Nova Scotia. It was a part of the tourism thing that they would provide it. And they, like I said, and they, they would have brochures, they would have, it was an information booth that people could answer questions about different places in Nova Scotia, and mainly the people that were supporting this, these people that were on the ship. That should be given some thought, I think. If we're going to promote our area, in our area I'm talking about, I'm not talking the rest of Nova Scotia, I'm talking Yarmouth Town, we would love to have them stay in Yarmouth Town, and we'd like to have the opportunity to tell them what we have to offer. I, I just put it out there as a thought, as a suggestion, and I welcome any comments or any feedback from my colleagues sitting around the table. And if there's any suggestion of what we should and should not do, then I'd like to hear. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Worship. As I understand, the Nova Star onboard magazine is going to be filled with articles and pictures of Yarmouth, and that's going to be in everyone's, in, in every cabin. It's also going to be available on the, on the, on the boat, as I understand. Sandy's nodding her head, yeah? And if we were to advertise on top, like either in the, somewhere, somewhere in the same magazine, that would be a little redundant, would it not? Because the pictures and, and the articles of interest would be the best advertising for us. I know I, I as a tourist, if I'm going anywhere for the first time, I will save articles of interest and/or pictures that I see in magazines rather than an ad for, for the destination that I'm going to. And we would be buying this ad from the Herald, would we not?
Yep, go ahead.
Your Worship, my understanding is the Herald has been, has been contracted to, to produce the magazine.
To produce the magazine, yes.
To produce the magazine, right. The magazine will, my understanding is the magazine will be full of content about Nova Scotia as well as New England.
Yes.
Because it'll be the same magazine no matter which way you're going. And so there, there may be some editorial about Yarmouth, but it will not be a Yarmouth magazine. It will be a Nova Scotia...
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just, I'm just saying that...
And we have no, no control over the editorial content?
We are going to have a presence in the magazine, as it is.
Enter.
Just...
No.
Can you put it, would you put your light on there, deputy? Go ahead.
Earlier, Jeff, did you say that we, that YASDA had a presence in our, in that magazine? And just to follow on what Ken was saying, are we approving or considering approving more, more expenditure? No, I just didn't hear your response, Jeff.
Just wanted to make sure we had a presence.
Yeah. YASDA's considering, haven't approved, they haven't met and decided, but they're considering two full pages. And that would be very specific to Yarmouth and Acadian Shores.
Yes.
Don't know, I mean, I assume that it'll be our product, our festivals, our events, our museums, our culture, that they'll be, that they will be putting out there through those two pages. And so because the, the information was sent to us as well as to YASDA, it's on your agenda for consideration.
Nova Star Cruises onboard publication, is that the same, not the same, but Counselor Dennis?
Well, I was just going to add too that we're going to be giving out magazines when we go, I'm going to the Boston Globe, so we'll be giving out the YASDA magazine there too, that's Yarmouth and Acadian Shores.
Good. Nova Star Cruises onboard publication. Were you going to...
No, we'll, we'll continue. There was an item that I thought we were discussing today, but, and I just remembered